It's a long story. The short version is they were...
I'd like to call to order a city council workshop, December 3, 2014, approximately 6:45 for interview of board applicants. Neil Johnson will not be attending tonight. He is at the EDC meeting they have. We will reschedule him in January. And at this time, Amanda, please, if you would just come up here.
Sure.
And Amanda, if you would, please speak into, you know, adjust the mic so you can speak right into it.
Okay.
Thank you very much for applying for the board, and please tell us a little bit about yourself.
Thanks. My name is Amanda Morsick. I have lived in Satellite Beach off and on most of my life. My grandparents have been here forever. They're one of the first houses on Sheridan. I love this city. I have, I moved back here from Houston, Texas, to raise my kids here because it's such a great community. Now that they're older and in elementary school, I'm looking to get more involved, and I think this would be a great opportunity to do that.
Thank you. Questions?
Amanda, why did you choose the Comprehensive Planning Board?
Um, I, like I said, I love this city, and I think there's opportunities for improvement, and I think it's, it would be an interesting board to sit on for me, to make decisions on where we go from here as a city and what we decide to, to do. I would love to have a say in that.
Are you familiar with our comprehensive plan?
Not yet.
Okay. Do you, are you very familiar with the Comprehensive Planning Board?
No.
With what they do, okay.
Uh-uh.
Do you...
I assume it's urban planning for the city and deciding what we build and the infrastructure of the city, I assume.
It's more of a big-picture guidance kind of thing as opposed to something like what goes on in the redevelopment district with the Redevelopment Agency Advisory Board. But it's, the Comprehensive Planning Board is one of our most important boards because they, they lay out the big picture for the future of the city.
Okay.
And they deal with some complex issues, and it's a board that requires the members to do some homework and to come prepared to discuss these issues. And is that something that you'd be interested in wrapping your hands around?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Welcome.
Hi.
Just a quick question. What do you see as the biggest challenge, opportunity, direction the city can go in? I always like to ask that question, especially when you're looking at this board. What do you envision for the future? Just give me your thoughts as to where we need to go, what we need to do, that sort of thing.
I think we have a lot of issues environmentally with water, storm surge and erosion and how we're going to handle rising waters around the city. I think that's a huge one that needs to be addressed and probably one of the more immediate ones.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have. No questions. Amanda, your MBA was in?
University of Houston, marketing.
Marketing?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. I mean, I've known you for a long time, and I really appreciate you stepping forward and helping us. Is there any other questions from council? The way it works is you're more than welcome to stay if you would like, but what happens, it's an agenda item, it's near the end of our packet, and then we take a vote. So you're more than welcome to stay or not. You will be notified.
Okay.
Okay?
Good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for volunteering.
Any further questions in the workshop? Here and none? We'll start back at 7:00. All right, everybody? Good evening. I'd like to call to order a city, regular city council meeting, the City of Satellite Beach, December 3, 2014, approximately 7:00 P.M. Please join New Councilman Osmer for a moment of silence and a pledge.
Please stand, please. A moment of silence. And the pledge, please.
The president of the United States of America, and the people who stand as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we will open up the floor for citizens' comments. This is for non-agenda items. I will take residents first and then non-residents. The floor is now open. So residents first?
Steve Hedley.
Resident?
Neat mind. Mayor, a couple months ago, during Chief Pearson's presentation on basically what was going on in the fire department, he, or the police department, sorry, he had mentioned that he had had two, yeah, one ring to rule them all, okay? He had mentioned that he had had two visitors from the MPAA, and they went to Atlantic Plaza to stop intellectual property theft. And we all applauded. It was a great move. If you open up your packet, your agenda packets, around page seven or eight, right after the beautification, like, the lighting beautification notice in the city manager's packet, there's a little image there, and you can barely see it, and it shows up better on the website in the PDF download. It's copyrighted.
Which page do you, if you can?
It's the little Santa Claus driving in a pickup truck for the...
Twilight Santa?
For the Twilight Santa.
Okay.
Okay? It's a copyrighted image. You can, you can't tell that it's copyrighted on your page, but trust me, it is, because if you look at it on the website, it's got a watermark to it. Okay? Here is the site from whence it's coming. Here is how to purchase that thing for $15.
We will turn this over for discussion.
It, it seems like a minor thing, and if I had not talked to the city before and several different city managers before about using copyrighted images, I wouldn't be here doing this. But I'm going to ask two things. One, that somebody write a, not a policy, but just a quick memo that everything that you find on Google Images is not free. Everything that you find on Google Images is not free. There are usage, and just as you would protect your industry from fishermen who don't have licenses or grab too many fish, this is kind of what I work with. Secondly, that we send the guy $15, pay the, pay for the image and use it legally.
Thank you very much. Public comment is still open for citizens, non-citizens, non-agenda items. Okay? It's time to close the citizens' comment portion. Open up for city council comments. Who would like to start?
I have nothing to add, Mr. Mayor.
Anything?
I would just like to say that it was on the 21st, that Courtney took me around to all the department heads, and I got to go to the police department and fire department and so on, and got the little tours, got to meet some people, and I really appreciate that. I think it's always best if you're going to be more or less in charge of the staff or the city, or represent them, I should say, if you're representing them, you should know them and know where they are and what they do. I thought, I really enjoyed that there, and obviously, the highlight of my day was at the police department. Nothing against the fire department, but I did get to watch a guy get tased, so that was good. It gets hard to beat that anywhere else you go, but I did appreciate the opportunity. It was really great to meet everybody, and I look forward to working with all the staff and hearing all about the good things you do.
Thank you. And I have no report from my end. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 5, city managers' report. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to remind everybody about the Ocean Reef Beach Festival this Saturday. We will be there. The city will have a booth. We will have some tablets there to promote our survey for the creating a resilient community. That survey is actually on our website, so please, if you haven't taken that survey, please visit our website and do so. The boat parade will be held on December 20, starting at 6:30, and I think they're closing the bridge at 6:00, so if you live over there, be mindful of that. I also wanted to mention that, before I leave, the topic of our resilient community survey, Dr. Lindeman, Dr. Fergus, and I had the opportunity to meet with a new council person who's, who was elected to St. Mary's in Georgia, city council, and they're doing a very similar project. And listening to their issues and their problems that they're having, they seem to be a little bit worse off than we are in terms of impacts from CLORIs, but they are very on the same, similar track as we are in terms of timing, so we've kind of found a sister project that we can bounce ideas off. And so it was a good, it was a good communication, and we'll be looking, probably looking forward to visiting them the next time they have their community meetings. I did want to remind council that your, the Brevard County Legislative Delegation meeting will be held on December 18. That'll be at the Brevard County Commission Chambers, and that starts at 1:00 and will usually ends a lot earlier than 5:00, but you never know. So you might be there till 5:00. The Beautification Board's annual holiday lighting contest nominations are due by December 19 at 4:00 P.M., so please send in all your nominations to us at City Hall. And also attached for your information, the Twilight Santa schedule for this year, and also another thank you letter regarding our fire department. You know, our thank you letters from our employees are weekly, and a lot of times, we get phone calls that I can't give you in terms of paper, but we get constant accolades and thank yous and compliments from our staff, and this letter that you see here is, you know, kind of common now. Please remember that we did cancel the December 17 city council meeting, so that's more for the community than anybody else. So if you come here at 7:00 on December 17, there won't be anybody here. I have two, I actually have three action items for you. I'm adding two. The first is in, is in your packet now. The Brevard County Planning and Development Department has sent us notice of an impact fee committee for the libraries. We have a slot on that committee, but we've never appointed anyone. We do have a recommendation to appoint one of our staff members, Cassie Hanson, from the Recreation Department for this position, so with your permission, we would, we would like you to do that.
Motion by Vice Mayor Gott, second by Councilman Breimer. Since it is an action item, I will open this up for a public comment. Hearing none, back to council. Any further council comments?
Yes, sir.
Lenore?
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Goff?
Yes.
Senator Tia?
Yes, motion carries.
The second item is that, as you recall, your town hall meetings aren't, sometimes aren't as attended as we would like them to be. So Councilman Montanaro came up with a pretty good idea of dividing the city up in sections and noticing all the residents in that section and having all of you there, as well as me and the department heads, to ask, you know, to, to basically be available for their questions. And the notice would allow them to call in any topics in advance of the meeting, so we could be prepared to answer their questions. I thought that was a really good idea. I think we'd get a lot of participation, and I would like to start that process in Montecito. Montecito has reserved the entire month of January at their clubhouse, and you can pick a date. We would prefer you to do that at the end of the month, because that would give us time to notice. But they were so excited that we wanted to do that meeting, that they reserved every night for us, so we, you all had your choice of me, of evenings to pick. So if you look at your calendar, we would recommend either Wednesday, the 28th, Thursday, the 29th. Friday probably won't be popular for residents to come out to a meeting.
Hold on here, I'm just... Is, you said the 28th?
Yes. January 28th or the 29th?
28th would work for us. The 29th is, we have a meeting. That's, no, right?
Oh, that's correct, yes.
That'll be the 22nd.
The 22nd is, okay.
Okay.
Apologize. 28, 29, 30, does 28 work for everybody?
28 works for me.
28.
Since it's an action item, I have to bring it to the public comment. Any public comment on this action item? Hearing none, bring it back to council. We gave you directions. Good, Courtney?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And then the third item is, we do need to reschedule the handbook workshop that we canceled last night, and we're recommending January 14 for that meeting.
Works for me.
Works for me.
Does that work for the author?
Okay, okay.
Okay.
All right.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
I have a question for...
Let me, just, I have to open it up since it was an action item. An action item concerning our handbook that we will have a workshop on the 14th of January. Any further public input? Thank you. Hearing none, go back to council.
We don't have anything for the Brevard Legislative Delegation meeting, do we? We're not presenting anything.
We're not presenting anything, but usually, we try to attend.
Yeah. And also, the Jingle Bell Run, for those who live in the south end of the city, that's also going to be on December 20, and that starts around 5:30, and they block off those streets back there, too. Lots of fun, but heads up that you won't be able to drive back there.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any further city managers' business? Hearing none. Moving on to Agenda Item 6, city attorneys' report.
I've been requested to give the normal public meeting and public records update, for lack of a better way of putting it, since we have a new council member. I guess the easiest way to do this is just to speak in general terms, because there's nuances, and every little fact can add a different connotation to the law. But I'll start with the easiest one first, is public meetings law. Basically, any time there's more than one member of the council that's discussing any item, irrespective of where that happens, that relates to something that the council foreseeably will be taking action on in the future, can only take place in a publicly noticed meeting. Basically, all I can tell you is, is if somebody, one council member tries to interact with you about some issue, and you don't feel comfortable with it, the best thing to do is excuse yourself from it. That doesn't mean you can't still be friends with or communicate with or speak with other council members. You just need to be aware that that is an issue that's out there, and I always use the phrase that the shadow of the law is greater than the law itself, because, you know, you know, sometimes residents will see council members talking to each other, and the perception will be they must be talking about public business, even though that isn't the case. So it's just more of an issue of being aware of what's going on around you, and, you know, that's really all I can say about that. As far as a public, and, and let me just add a couple other things. The public meetings law does not preclude you, for example, from speaking to a member of another board. Like, you can talk to a PZAV board member, and that does not violate sunshine law. You can talk to any other board members, for, for the most part, and that will not be a violation of sunshine law. The only time that that potentially can come up is if, for instance, the council were to delegate you, an individual council member, or the mayor, to go speak with some other board. That generally is considered to be subject of the sunshine law, because you've been delegated that position by council when council normally would be the entity that would be having that conversation. As far as the public records laws are concerned, basically, any document that you receive as a council member is presumed to be a public record. Any document that you generate that relates to the public business is generally going to be construed to be a public record. Doesn't matter where you receive it, doesn't matter how it's generated, where it's generated, it's still a public record. I don't know if you're aware of the cases that are going on in Orange County right now, where there were text messages and various things like that, and there's an investigation going on about those issues. So it doesn't matter what the media is, so to speak, that these messages are being generated in, whether it's hard copy, emails, texts, any, Facebook, anything like that, if it relates to the public business, it's, it's still a public record. My understanding is, is that each council member has a, an email address provided through the city. It's recommended that any public business that you do, that it goes through those, through that email address. It makes it easier for the city to deal with that issue if there's a public records request, number one. And number two, if there are issues regarding whether you have public records on your cell phone, for instance, or those types of situations, you have to go through there and go through the exercise of trying to figure out what is and what isn't, or what may or what may not be a public record on those other devices. So it just makes things a lot easier just to do everything through the email address that the city has. That's really a general summary of those two areas, and like I said, there, there, different facts can make the, the determination change a little bit, but those are the general rules. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Coach. Moving on to Agenda Item 7, discuss, take action on the JAG program grant for 2014. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to address you on this, this topic. And for those that are not aware, just a brief summary on what the JAG grant is. The federal government has what's called the Justice Assistance Grant, and we call it the JAG grant, and that grant is non-matching federal funds that are given to police departments nationwide that are, it's based on population. Historically, in, as is the case this year, our amount, again, is about $1,200. Since I can remember, we had been using this every year for laptops. It was, every year was the same presentation, every year was the same purchase, because we were trying to get laptops for everybody. Well, we now no longer have that particular need, and the need that we have now is to use that money to allow the newer video cameras that we have to become wireless, so that we don't have to have the situation where officers' cameras fill up, and they've got to come in, they've got to get a supervisor, unlock the camera, take out the SD card. It's just, it's, it's old school, it's old technology, and we just didn't have the money at the time to get the system that we needed, and we bought a system that was upgradable, which we thought made sense, because it worked now, and it's upgradable to be current technology when we have the ability. Well, we purchased it correctly, saved ourselves money there. Now we have federal funds that we can take, that we can now upgrade the technology that we have, so now it's completely wireless, just like the rest of the cameras that we have, and I just think it's a great use of the money. And I would just ask that we be allowed to accept that grant of the $1,200 to be used, as that proposal was written in your package for that upgrade to wireless cameras.
May I just authorize the submittal of the 2014 burn grant in the amount of $1,282 to purchase and install wireless capabilities for patrol cars with no city match.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Gott, second by Councilman Breimer. Any discussion from council?
No.
At this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item 7. Hearing none, back to council. Any further discussion?
No.
No, Courtney. Excuse me, Lenore?
Steve Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Goff?
Yes.
Senator Tia?
Yes. Chief, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Moving on to Agenda Number 8, discuss, take action on moving forward with the request for proposal for municipal community development software vendor.
Thank you, Mayor. We are actually approved, requesting your approval of the request for proposal for the procurement of the municipal development soft, community development software. This software has been budgeted, as you recall, in your capital improvement program for this year of $52,000. This would allow for paperless inspection, gradual integration of, and retrieval of data, GIS mapping, and it would provide basically a connection between fire inspections, building permitting, business tax receipts, and allow for, in, in, basically in the field inspections and permitting. The current software that we have is over 15 years old, and it's, it's pretty, it's time we, we got an update on that. So we're requesting your approval. We're expecting the maximum cost this year to be less than 15, $52,000, and an annual reoccurring cost of estimated $12,000.
So moved. A motion by Vice, excuse me, Councilman Breimer. You have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Osmer. Discussion.
I'll just comment, it's a very clearly written RFP.
We provided the information, and Councilwoman Gott, or Vice Mayor Gott rewrote it.
Question on, are we getting where all these systems are starting to become compatible with what we have?
We're not quite even close to that yet. We have a lot of work to do on that, actually. But, you know, we, it's a financial balancing, basically. I mean, we can only afford to do so much at once, but our current server system and everything is compatible with this type of software, so we didn't, we did ensure that.
So when we take this particular software package, and we're upgrading other ones, eventually, our goal is that this is all going to be seamless then?
Correct.
Are we going to have the reoccurring $12,000, that can go in future budgets?
Yes.
So that...
That'll be an operating expense.
Okay.
At this time, open up for public comment on this Agenda Item Number 8. Hearing none, back to council. Any further discussion? Lenore?
Vice Mayor Goff?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Senator Tia?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, Courtney. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Number 9, discuss, take action on holiday bonus for city employees.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not, I'm requesting your approval of a holiday bonus for employees, and the, and the total amount for that bonus to each, or to the city, the cost to the city will be $33,425 for fiscal year 1415. We're recommending a holiday bonus for employees, and full-time employees in the amount of $350, and part-time employees in the amount of $175. As you recall, this fiscal year did not include raises. We were the only city in Brevard County that did not provide raises. We did, however, have some savings from the CRA in terms of money coming back to the taxing authorities. That is a non-recurring money to the city, so we're recommending to provide the employees with this bonus. Of course, it wouldn't take all of the money we're getting back from the CRA, but it would, it would take some. I did want to just comment that there's, you know, there's always the idea that we should put money in reserves. We have a reserve strategy. We have far surpassed our reserve strategy in terms of money going into the reserves. I think at this point, we really need to show our employees our appreciation for everything they've done and provide them with a small holiday bonus this year. It's definitely not even close to what a raise would have given them this year, but it would show them some appreciation, and hopefully, by next year, we'll be back on a typical, regular track for annual raises. But this year, we can afford the holiday bonus. We are in a good financial position to do that, and so I'm recommending that we do that this year.
Thank you. Discussion from council.
May I just approve the holiday bonus for employees in the amount of $33,425 for FY1415, and thank all of you guys.
I have a, I have a motion by Vice Mayor Gott, second by Councilman Breimer. Any further discussion from council?
Just one. So in the, in the future years, we're looking at getting back on track with raises and that sort of thing?
Yes. That's a, that's a top priority. As managers, we have to make sure that, you know, they understand that we appreciate them, and raises is how we do that. Unfortunately, this year, we couldn't do that.
Understood.
So we wanted to make sure that we gave them something, and we, and we could give them this. It doesn't impact us negatively financially, and it would be a good idea.
Okay.
Thank you. At this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item 9.
Gabe Fine, citizen. Mr. Chairman, I believe our employees have not received any pay raises for four or five years. I believe they did receive somewhat of a pay raise last year, which was negated by the increase in healthcare costs. I think we have fantastic employees and all employees. I believe with the exception of the city manager who excluded herself from this bonus. I am not only in 100% support of this, I am elated that we have a city manager that is, her leadership is showing that she cares for her employees. I'm also elated with this council that I hopefully will approve this bonus. I'm also related with this council, that I hopefully will approve this bonus. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Public comments still open? Yes, sir?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman, City Manager, City Attorney. I'm Ned Golden. I am the Fraternal Order of Police State Staff Representative. I represent your police officers in contract negotiations and the discipline issues, and I would just like to echo what the city manager said, that, you know, we would like to see what, anything you could do would help. I would like to also let the commission, as the city manager know, the council, as the city manager knows, your officers have ratified contracts without raises. They haven't drug the contract negotiations out. They recognize where the city's at financially. They, they haven't made it a major issue, a lot of arguing, a lot of expense, and a lot of man-hours on either side. So anything, I would just like to say that anything that you can do, back to the officers I represent, I understand it's a citywide thing, but I can only speak for the officers that we represent, would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Floor is still open?
Jerry has a resident. I'm going to take an unpopular stand on this. I don't think that city employees should be getting Christmas bonuses, because that's the only holiday that we're tolerating about here. Usually in the private sector, employees get Christmas bonuses based on profits that businesses have earned. City of Salt Lake Beach makes nothing, they earn no profits. One other thing I'd like to know is, how do these figures of $350 and $175 come about? Just curious. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Those figures came out of what we could reasonably afford, and we wanted to provide a good bonus to the employee, but we also wanted to make sure that we could afford it.
Thank you.
Until we came up with.
Public comments still open? Hearing none, bring it back to council.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to respond to a comment that was made.
Okay.
Governments are not in the business to make profit, but these folks, if this vote passes, are getting a small bonus, because they're the ones who helped us realize the savings that make it possible to pass this on to them. It is a very small way to show gratitude for the outstanding work that our employees And I also, would you just clarify on the raises, not from this, but from the last, that the employees did get raised, but would you, would you clarify that?
Yeah, they did get a 3% raise. Unfortunately, the increasing cost of healthcare usually negates those raises, so, you know, so hopefully we'll be able to tackle the healthcare issue in the future, but as of now, and you could say that across the state of Florida, most public employees' raises are negated by their healthcare increases every year.
Okay, thank you. To the employees, thank you very, very much for what you do for our city. If we used the wrong term, holiday bonus, I apologize to whoever it offends. Say it's your yearly bonus, I wish we could give you a raise every year, or at least keep you up to cost of living and insurance. In some years, we can, others, we can't. But for the little as we're giving you here, I apologize, I wish we could give you more, you do an incredible job for us. And we keep hearing it all the time, the letters we get, the people we meet on the streets, you know, the job you're doing is great, and we thank you very much.
I would just like to echo that. Despite the fact that maybe we weren't the only one to be able to give out pay raises, I would put that aside and just say, as the staff that I have met, and the work that they do, and what you see all the way around the city is, you deserve it, and you should get it, and I'm glad to see this is coming your way.
Just one last thing. The thing I want to recognize is, Courtney, thank you for putting this plan together, and as we move forward into this next year, I think it's going to be crucial to see what we can do with, with the process. This is very helpful, but again, we've got to be forward-thinking with how we move with the rest of this fire police, and of course, all of our city staff, so, thank you.
Further comment? Lenore?
Alton Brimer?
Yes.
Alton Brimer? Yes.
Vice Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Mayor Tino?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you, staff and employees. Moving on to agenda number 10, which are appointments. We need to elect a vice mayor.
I'd like to make a motion to elect Dominic Montanaro as vice mayor.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Brimer, second by Vice Mayor Gott, to elect Dominic Montanaro as vice mayor. Take each of these. Time, any further discussion? Hearing none, Lenore?
Vice Mayor Goff?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Councilman Brimer?
Yes.
Mayor Tino?
Yes, thank you. And Lorraine, thank you very much for your help, Vice Mayor, this year. Okay, liaisons for FY14-15. Courtney, do you have?
Yeah, I just wanted to give you Dominic, I mean, Vice Mayor Montanaro's. He would prefer the, he likes the retirement plan, Board of Trustees, boards, and he also likes the Code Enforcement Board.
And those are the two boards that he are, he's on?
Would prefer. Yes. He's on that now.
Okay.
He...
Let me ask, does anybody have an objection to being on those boards?
No.
Okay.
Okay. I also have Councilman Osmer would like Sampson Island Park Committee. Is that okay?
Perfect.
He would also like the Planning and Zoning Advisory Board. Yeah? Good.
I would prefer to keep that one.
Oh, I thought you had CPAB, I'm sorry.
Well, actually, I would prefer to let that one go and to keep B and Z, but I don't know.
Okay.
I have to have boards that meet in here because of the hearing situation.
Gotcha.
Steve, let me ask you this. Would you mind swapping?
No, I, that'd be fine.
Great.
Okay.
Steve will do the comprehensive plan, and Lorraine will stay with the Planning and Zoning.
Yep.
That's agreed?
And then I was hoping Councilman Osmer would take the beautification board, because they meet on Friday at nine. Is that something you could do?
I can do that, so long as that Friday jives with my Fridays.
It's the first Friday of the month.
Because mine actually goes every other Friday, but, I mean, for the most part, yeah, I'd be okay with that.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Councilman Brimer, Board of Adjustment?
Come on.
And Recreation?
Good.
Councilman Gott, South Beaches Coalition. Now you're going to do PZAB, right?
PZAB in South Beaches.
Right. And then can we keep you on the library board?
No, it is a hearing.
Okay, all right. So one of you all will need to take the library board. I can ask Councilman Montanaro if he can do that?
Okay.
How many is he on? Dominic's on, how many now? One?
He's on two.
He's on two.
Okay.
But it's an evening, so he could probably do that.
Okay.
I know some of you have a hard time getting there during the day, too, so.
Okay.
Okay. And then Mayor will be taking Space Coast League, and the CRAC, or the Community Development Advisory Committee.
Okay.
And we're good.
Okay. That suit everybody?
Yep.
Okay, sounds good. All right. The liaisons for board, boards and committees, which we already did, as part of this Space Coast League of City Voting Delegate, and alternate.
It's typical of city managers.
Myself, and Courtney, okay. And the South Beach Coalition, Lorraine, okay. Okay. Moving on to agenda item 11, which is just the cancellation of the December 17th, 2014 council meeting. We'll resume again after the first of the year. Sure here. At this time, number 12, appointments to boards.
Excuse me, Mayor, can you recap the other meetings, so that we can identify the January and add the two?
The two meetings for January would be the workshop on the 14th?
Yes.
And a workshop on the 28th.
The 28th would be the Montecito Public Meeting.
Town Hall, excuse me. So we would be, every month, that's going to be seven, 14, 21, 22.
Every Wednesday that month.
Every Wednesday that month.
Yeah.
At seven?
Do we want to mention agenda items for the January 7th meeting, since that's our next regular?
It's so far away, we're, we don't have, we don't have a good list right now, because it's so far away.
Well, what I would like to see on there is a review of our 2014 goals, see where we are?
Okay.
And have us submit our goals for 2015, and we can work on approving them then. And I would also like to make a suggestion, if I may, the, from the council desk, has been started up again in the Beachmaster, and I think it would probably be good for the mayor to have the first January, February issue. And if I may suggest, for your column, if you would talk about what we've accomplished in 2014, and what we're looking ahead to in 2015, so that the residents can know what we're, what we're doing.
Good, that's fine. Courtney, I'll get with you on that.
Got it.
Bren, you still?
I'll send you out a reminder to submit your goals.
Okay. Okay, boarding committees, appointments here. Start with, reappointments, please go one by one.
I'll make a motion, appoint Judy Kramer to the Beautification Board, regular member one, nine, seventeen.
May I interrupt you just a moment? Can we just make a motion to approve all of these reappointments that's submitted here?
Let me ask you, let me ask everybody else here.
I'll withdraw that motion first of all, so we can work this.
Anybody have any problems with anybody being reappointed?
No.
I looked at their attendance, and I think the word is getting out, you know, the attendance is definitely improving.
Yes, it is.
Good to see.
Okay. If that satisfies everyone?
Move to reappoint each of the names submitted here, to the boards, as indicated, as regular members.
Second. Motion by, still, Councilman.
For the terms.
Council?
I can't hear you.
For the terms. There's different, there's different dates.
For the terms indicated here.
Okay, noted. Okay, any further discussion?
No.
Okay.
That's for the reappointments, correct?
We're on the reappointments. Okay.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Brimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Mayor Tino?
Yes, motion passes.
Okay.
Now we have the new appointments. Neil Johnson is not being considered this time, he will be the next one.
I'll make a motion to pass, to appoint Amanda Morses to a regular member CPAB, term ending 12/317.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Brimer, second by Councilman Osmer, to appoint Amanda Morses to CPAB. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Lenore?
Vice Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Alton Brimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Mayor Tino?
Yes, motion's passed, motion passes, excuse me. Okay, adoption of minutes for November 19th, special meeting and regular meeting.
Vote to approve is submitted.
Second.